I can't hear it. Can anybody, can you guys hear it?
No, I can't hear anything.
What? I don't know.
Sounds muffled.
What?
Muffled. I mean, I can hear some noise, but-
Yeah, we couldn't hear anything.
Well, I will apologize. He tells a great story about geysers on Jupiter spitting out ice and how in relative, how relatively our weather is simply not so bad. But if you can't hear it, I do not want to torture you with more. So my apologies. With that, since this is the evening of technical difficulties, I'm going to hand it off to the superintendent, who will hopefully not have any.
Maybe we can provide the link.
Oh, I can do that.
How come I don't see my square on there?
Can't hear anything.
I'm so sorry. I feel like I've never done this before. Can you hear me now?
A little bit, just a little bit.
I can hear you.
Okay. All right. Sorry about that. Real quick, thank you to the Chartwell's team for the food distribution this evening. We served 360 meals, which is 120 students. I provided an overview of my activities on the agenda. I want to highlight a couple. Last week, I visited Lowell. Mr. Holt, I think we might be close to another board visit there. It's coming along really well. And they're starting to get some classrooms in place, so that'll be exciting to see. Creston, Sunny Heights, and Stony Brook. Our students and teachers are continuing to do great things in the classroom. It was nice to see our elementary students on Friday participating in safe and socially distanced Valentine's Day activities. I was able to observe some of our virtual teachers at the intermediate middle schools. Our teachers have always been great at multitasking. But teaching virtual requires a much different level of multitasking. It was really neat to see them in action. It's been a busy and productive couple of weeks with our board. We had a great board retreat on the 30th. Complexity and teacher compensation. Work sessions on the 8th, our legislative forum on the 10th, and just a reminder that we'll have our next board work session on the budget, which is Wednesday, March 3rd. Couple of highlights that I want to spotlight. Congratulations to Carly Merchant, who's a freshman at Warren Central, who qualified for state in diving. If you have not followed this story, she was the first warrior to qualify since 1995, when our very own Lakeside teacher Andrea Peck-Wiggins qualified. If you've not seen the picture, Andrea met with Carly to share their special bond, which was really neat. Carly did finish 24th in state. I reached out to Carly's mom, who many of you know, is Christie Merchant, who's our principal at Grassie Creek, to congratulate her and Carly. And Christie just said, we're all speechless still. They just were kind of in awe and didn't expect it to happen, but are thrilled that it did. Also, in the water, congratulations to Riley Brick, who's a junior at Warren Central, who qualified for state in swimming. She was the first female warrior to qualify in 39 years. Riley was also the Marion County champion in the 500-yard freestyle. So congratulations to both of them. Congratulations to Zach Dre, Kyrell Lavelle, Carlton Perry, David Pearson, and Jawan Anderson, and Tyler Jones for qualifying for state in wrestling. We wish them all the best this coming weekend. Want to say thank you to all of our coaches and parents who support and grow our student athletes. And I'll leave you with this. Grassie Creek was nominated by Indiana to join the esteemed community of National Blue Ribbon Schools. A national blue ribbon school are public and non-public schools that are producing outstanding results for all students. They have demonstrated consistent excellence and made progress in closing the gaps in student achievement. The National Blue Ribbon School Recognition Program is part of a larger U.S. Department of Ed effort to identify and disseminate knowledge about effective school leadership and promising instructional practices. Christie and her team, supported by Ryan Russell, are working on that application, and that will be due April 9. So we'll keep you posted and keep your fingers crossed. Also, board, you have a copy of our February newsletter. Thank you, Janine, for your good work with that. I encourage you to take a look at that. And that is my report this evening.
Thank you so much, Dr. Hanson. And now we're going to move on to board comments and correspondence, beginning with Teri.
Good evening, everyone. Dr. Hanson, you took away some of my thunder. Yeah, okay. I just want to say I'm excited for school to really start back tomorrow. I know we've had a long timeout, so looking forward to some of our kids coming back in person. Also, I did want to shout out to the girls' swim team. Riley and Carly, good job on that. Also, the boys' basketball team and the girls' basketball team seem to be doing really well right now. And I also wanted to give a special shout out to the wrestlers who are going to state and wish everybody good luck and just the competitors that are kind and caring to each other. So that is it.
Thank you so much, Teri. Howard?
Make sure you're not muted. Make sure you're not muted. Make sure you're not muted. And I got muted. Anyway. I'm just, I'm just still excited about being on the, on the board. This is my second board meeting. And I would like to say that I survived the pandemic of 2020, and I'm trying to survive the big freeze of 2021. And that's pretty much all I've got right now. Glad to be here.
Thank you so much, Howard. Julie?
Good morning, everyone. Howard, the big freeze is nothing compared to 78. Somebody had to say it, so I'll say it. It kind of gives you an idea of how old I am, but anyway, I just want to say as we have our high school and middle schools going back to hybrid tomorrow, everybody continue practicing safe, the safe protocols, so that everybody stays safe and we have a great end of the year. Welcome back, kind of, everybody.
Thank you so much, Julie. LaShawna?
No. Hello, everyone. I'm like Howard, still getting used and excited about being on the school board. And I just want to say that I appreciate Dr. Hanson and his team for our virtual learners. When I had a community scholar that was having technical difficulties and the team handled it very quickly, and the parent was delighted. So I just want to give your administration and the IT team for virtual learners a shout out for the work that you do and the dedication and excited that our community is excited about going back to school. So, great job.
Thank you so much, LaShawna. Gloria? Gloria, you're muted.
I am so sorry. Hello, everyone. I am so excited about our big freeze that everyone is talking about because it brings back memories of my childhood. And this would be a great opportunity, families, for you to have family time together because some of my fondest memories were when my family would go out and we'd make angels in the snow and we would build a snowman. Oh, my gosh, that was so much fun. And then we would even go sledding. I would even take my kids sledding. And you know, it was just so much fun. So I'm just asking everyone to take advantage of this and just create some good family time, just to enjoy yourself and create memories during this time. Have a great day.
Thank you so much, Gloria. Michelle?
Hello, everyone. Welcome. I hope everyone is well and safe and warm. And I remember that big freeze because I had to walk home from elementary school in that. So that's all. Welcome back. I hope everybody's doing well.
Thank you so much, Michelle. That leaves me. So since we're all sharing bad weather times, to LaShawna and Howard, my second board meeting, much like your second board meeting, was in the middle of that huge ice storm that we had. And so I think we were the only event that took place in the district that week, if I remember correctly. Like, it was nightmarish. So it's just a tradition. Enjoy. And speaking to Michelle's point, I was a walker at Heather Hills and walked my way to and from many, many snowstorms. But the good news is you get to learn whatever your children's had for pretty much your entire life and the rest of theirs. So that works out really well for everyone. Um, I want to thank all of the board members for attending the board orientation that we held. We had some really good professional development, and I was so happy to see everyone that day. As a board, we had an excellent legislative breakfast during a snowstorm at 7:00 in the evening, as one has legislative breakfast during a pandemic. And I want to, again, want to thank all of our legislators and all of the board members who were able to attend that night. I know we had some conflicts and some committee meetings that were going on, but it was just really important and to thank everyone for their time that night and the fact that we were able to get up in front of them and have those conversations. I had done a couple of different PDs, one through I SBA, and then I attended the last on local government that I believe that Dr. DeBoer will be doing, although there were mentions of them trying to get him back in the summer. And if anyone would like to get that information, I have it, and it's a really good overview of kind of the overall economic situation of Indiana and how that affects local government funding. Finally, finally, Science Olympiad, because I can't go through this time of year without discussing it. We have competed in three events. We have three more to go. The third will be state. We are small but mighty, so I'm pretty proud of everyone who stuck around. I do want to give out a shout out to the wrestlers that we have going to state. We have a few gentlemen who will have now attended state all four years of high school, which is no small accomplishment on their behalf. And then I would remind everyone that we are in the middle of legislative season. I know that you all know that. I will paraphrase Governor Holcomb from earlier today. Nothing is determined until sinny die, and until sinny die, nothing is determined. And so until the moment that hammer goes down, we have to keep a watch and fight the good fight. And with that, I will take a look at Teri and ask if she has any board correspondence. And she does not. And are there any yellow cards? And no, they are not. And so with that, we are going to move on to the consent agenda. This month, the consent agenda consists of the approval of minutes, the financial report and payroll claim, the financial report claims register and electronic payments, the financial report year-to-date summary of fund balances, the human resources report, permission to accept gifts and grants, change orders, and change orders. Do I have a motion? Julie made the motion. Is there a second? And Howard seconded. I will look to, is there any discussion? Hearing none, I will look to Ms. Amos for a roll call vote.
Howard? We're taking the vote, correct?
Yep.
We'll vote today. Rachel?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
LaShawna? Gloria?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
The vote passes?
The motion carries, and we will move on to our first report of the evening. Hopefully, we are done with technical glitches, and it will be Pam Griffin with virtual updates.
Nope.
Alrighty. Good evening, President Burke, Dr. Hanson, esteemed board members, near and virtual. Last month, I came to you with an update for virtual, and we specifically spoke on our board goals in relations to investing in future of our graduates, as well as investing in people. And so tonight, I come back to you to expand a little bit more on the investment in the future of our graduates as it relates to providing our students and our families with meaningful choices and opportunities to make sure they have the best opportunities and experiences in school as possible, but also to share a little bit about, with you, about where we are in regards to the design of instruction to meet the needs of our virtual and hybrid world that we're living in right now, as well as our goal in ensuring that our, our, our students and our staff in every classroom is using electronic tools for teaching and learning. Alrighty, so real quick update with virtual learning. As was shared earlier this evening, we did, we're getting ready to welcome back our 6 through 12 hybrid students tomorrow. And as you can see, even from the last time I gave you an update from really just a week ago, we've only changed about 90 students in difference. And so as you can see, the virtual option is still a very important and viable choice that our parents have made, and we're very proud to offer that. So I've provided those breakdowns for you at each grade level so that you are aware. And just as a reminder, all of our virtual teachers are housed in their schools here in Warren. They teach in buildings in their classrooms, so they have access to all of their digital tools and content so that they can make sure that not only are they able to deliver instruction without interruption, but also so that they're available to their families, because that's where their classroom phones are, as well as multiple ways to reach their families if they're in, if they're using their other screens for other things, like running small group instruction. So one of the first areas that I wanted to just circle back around with you is it was about this time, not too long ago, about two years ago, when I brought to you Canvas. And I'm really pleased to let you guys know today that we have met the goal of making sure that all of our teachers, K through 12, including our instructional assistants, have been trained with Canvas. And as you know, we started using it with our very first e-learning day. And so as we think about the different types of professional development opportunities that we've offered our teachers, whether they were in person or on their campuses, working in small groups, we do offer to our teachers Growing with Canvas, which is also a digital learning opportunity that our teachers can access at any time to really work on making their Canvas pages as engaging as they want, but also using that digital tool as a way to continue to deliver the best instruction they can and to create experiences for our students that allow them not only to collaborate, but to submit their work in multimedia fashion so that students are able to show their learning in different modalities. Also, I've included for you, again, some examples of our daily schedules as they relate to our different grade levels. But also, I wanted to let you know that even in chemistry and English 10, our students who are in the virtual programs there as well, and our hybrid program are really using this digital tool to stay connected to their students. As you know, relationships are very important, but also so is procedure and routine. And so Canvas has really allowed our teachers to create procedures and routines so that students can access their content. Because after all, if students aren't able to access their content, they're not able to do their work and meet the expectations that we have for them to be successful in classroom. But more importantly, they're not able to access their teachers, to have those moments and opportunities where our teachers are really trying to build relationships with their students every opportunity they get in front of them. Seesaw is a digital app that we actually use with our kindergartners through fourth graders, because if you've ever used Canvas, it can be extra. Let's keep it real. Our kindergarten through fourth grade teachers have done a great job of making it accessible to our in-person students, and our virtual students are really doing well with it as, as well. However, when we think about the user experience for digital content, it's really important that we take into special consideration the unique needs developmentally of our kindergartners through fourth graders. And so that is why we use Seesaw. Seesaw allows our students to engage with their teachers and their, their peers in truly a more like collaborative way. But most importantly, our parents can collaborate and communicate with the teacher. So students are able to submit their work, and they're learning, just like our high schoolers, different modalities. So if they're making a video or a recording, or they've drawn a beautiful picture, or they've written a beautiful poem in their, in their journals, the students can capture that information and upload it through Seesaw, and the teachers are able to see their learning in real time. And so as we think about that tool, we're really impressed with what our teachers and our students have been able to do with that as they engage our families. Next, our curriculum. As you guys already know and are aware, a couple of years ago, we adopted several different types of curriculum that we, that were already digital. Primarily, when we think about our English curriculum, we adopted Wonders for our K through 5 program and Study Sync for our seven or six through eight program. And so wanted to just, again, show that information to you, how it's personalized to our students when they log in. It's just a reminder that we have those. But also, we wanted to make sure that you had a couple of ideas, or at least some visuals of the different resources we're using for Eureka K through 12, as well as our Pearson products that we use for science and social studies. So when we think about relationships and instructional, instruction and curriculum, kindergarten through sixth grade, especially in the world of virtual, I want to circle back to that really awesome presentation that Allison Woods gave not too long ago about PBIS and SEL. And what I wanted to do is communicate that. And so I worked with Kate Schwartz, who is our Director of Professional Learning, and she helped me find really great examples of how this is shown in the virtual world. As you know, we do have PBIS in our virtual environment. But most importantly, we have celebrations. And so we had Christmas programs, and we had different opportunities for students to participate in competitions within their virtual classrooms. And most importantly, when we think about not just SEL and PBIS, but we're also making sure that, like, for example, in this little screenshot right here is Mrs. Yubing's class, who is a sixth grade social studies teacher. When you click on that activity, when you turn it on, you hear your teacher's voice. It's not a robot. It's not something they don't know. They hear the familiarity of their teacher's voice reading that information to them if they need it read to them. And sometimes, after students read something, they want to hear it again. So again, hearing it from their teacher's voice helps them stay connected, not just to the content, but to the person that is trying to make sure that they learn it and that they master it. In seventh and eighth grade, one of the questions that we get a lot is, like, do the kids actually still have novels? Or do they just have eBooks? Well, they have both. They have the both. They have the best of both worlds. But also, I get that question a lot about, like, workbooks. Is everything online? No, our students do have their Eureka math books. They're able to actually write in them. But there are some students that have become really proficient with their technology, and they have the digital copy, too. And they're able to write on that copy from their iPads or to type on it from their Chromebooks. And so again, we are working really hard to make sure that the instruction and the curriculum and the relationship that the teacher has with the student to help students build confidence in those areas exists in both places so that our students are proficient. But also, what I love about this picture is that this is our Hope Center. This is the virtual counseling center at one of our intermediate middle schools. This is Stony Brooks. And so our students can visit their, our study students can visit their Stony Brook Hope Center, and they can click on to their grade level or click on to some of these activities that exist within their counseling center that's virtual to get access to their counselors at any time. And then when we think about Warren Central, we think about the opportunities that they have really worked hard to create for their students, especially as we are trying to navigate ISTEAP and WEADA and all of those extras that our high school students have to do because we're getting so close to graduation. And I just wanted to make sure that you guys saw just a tidbit of the, the advertising and how they're working really hard to capture the attention of our community and our students to make sure students have access to people. Learning Hubs, hopefully Ryan will have an opportunity to bring you guys up to date on that, appeared to be very successful. Students, like, showed up, and it was a great time to see our teachers engaging with our students. But more importantly was what was happening during that time. And not just Learning Hubs, but Super Saturdays, the tutoring times that students signed up for, but also how our students are able to engage with not just their counselors, but also their academic coaches and their deans when there is a need. That's my update for you guys. So are there any questions that I can take for you at this time?
I don't have a question, but I wanted to say I had a child who participated in Learning Hubs, and I talked to many teachers who ran Learning Hubs, and they were really, really good.
The parents and the kids were fans big time.
Yeah, and even as well as the teachers that I spoke to, they really thought that they made a noticeable impact on those students. So thank you to everyone.
Our teachers definitely miss their students. Alrighty.
Seeing no one else being unmuted, thank you so much, Ms. Griffin. And now we are going to move to Rich Schepler for our in-person update.
I'm sure I would destroy it.
No. Alright, Mr. Schepler. Yep. Oh, no, it doesn't appear to be covered. You mean, like, actually physically covered? Oh, you're right. Let me take a look at that. Hang on a second. Let me pull it. Alright, let me just move this really quick. Is it this one, Mr. Schepler?
Yes.
Okay. Alrighty, I will fix that and is that better? Damn. I'm not a blur. Okay. Yeah, I was no, it's, it's a yeah, I will get it set up for you. Don't you worry about it. Okay, so I'm gonna go present. And then all you need to do is click your mouse when you want to. Why don't I just stand over here and you tell me when you want me to go? Try the pointer. There you go. There you go.
Alright, let's do that.
There you go, Mr. Schepler.
Alright. Okay, good evening.
Okay, good evening. Okay, hang on.
Good evening.
Yeah, right there?
Yeah, right there.
Okay.
We're seeing like from here to here.
Okay, alright, very good. Good evening Superintendent Dr. Hanson, President Burke, members of the board. I appreciate this opportunity to be here this evening to share all the wonderful things that are going on specifically with our seniors and how we're get trying to get all of them across the finish line. Thank you so much for setting this up, Ms. Griffin. I would have been struggling with this a little bit. But before I do that, I want to make sure I introduce the two young gentlemen I have here to my right. This would be Ches Resinoguko. He is our dean of our senior cohort. Okay, and then Matt Dingman is our Assistant Principal in charge of Culture and Climate. And so I know that Bree Brown was wanting to be here. I think she's on Zoom somewhere. She's had some car issues and she's she has gymnastics or she doesn't, but her kid gymnastics, basketball, soccer, piano lessons and a number of other things. So with that, again, talking about senior support, and that was a good segue, Ms. Griffin. Talking about all those things that we have going on with getting our seniors again across that finish line. I'd like to start out with talking about our after-school tutoring program. When we were hybrid first semester, we had after-school tutoring for four nights a week, Monday through Thursday. We averaged about almost at the end, 60 students that were attending our after-school program, which really very pleased with. We'd love to have a lot more. We had the counselors, the academic coaches, the teachers, all there to assist. We had secretaries. We had everybody that were literally welcoming all of our students into that West Cafeteria to assist with whatever. Now, you heard me say, you heard me mention counselors because that was a big point, to reach our kids with the social and emotional learning. And I know Ches will be talking about that at that length here in just a few minutes. But we were able to hit him academically, hit him social and emotional learning and whatever needs that they have. This has been, this whole thing, you know, we all got into this profession to be in front of kids and to help kids. I didn't get in front of this or getting yet getting this profession to be in front of this screen. I really didn't. And so that's why we're, I mean, I'm looking so forward to having them come back in our building tomorrow. At least about a half of them, a third of them. Because this has been a transition and it's been a struggle for all of us. Our teachers, our administrators, our parents. It's been a very, very challenging, but you know, every time I went to Ryan Russell, you know, with a plan to, okay, can we try that? He would always be very, I mean, so helpful to all of us to get these things. So that he can take it to Dr. Hanson and Dr. Hanson will understand what we're what we're really needing. And I just appreciate his help. So with the virtual jumpstart tutoring, that is research-based, that is put together by our academic coach, Carpe Naylor, and she is specifically with the seniors. She has a number of peer tutors that have gone through a series and it basically to get certified to do this. And peer-to-peer means a great deal to our students because sometimes they don't want to go to an adult for help. And so we were able to set up this peer tutoring through Zoom and they're able to set up times to 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 reach out to other students for assistance. So that was, that was another way we were able to reach our our students. Senior Saturdays, we have two hours on a Saturday morning from 10 to noon that are not only our students took advantage of, but sometimes our parents. I know that Ches had a number of parent conferences that were held in our East Cafeteria. Because again, like I said, it's a transition. It's been stressful and for for everybody, including all of our families. So the senior Saturdays, again, they hit on the social and emotional aspect. We have counselors there. We have academic coaches, teachers, all assisting our kids on Saturday mornings. Senior learning hubs, I know Pam or Ms. Griffin mentioned this earlier about the senior learning hubs. And I want to say this, like, you know, it's such a team effort, you know what? Mr. Holt was able to get bus transportation for our senior learning hubs because we had over 300 seniors that were in need of retrieving credits. And so with that, we gave that list to our transportation department to say, hey, these 300 seniors need to be here for our learning labs. We need them here. We need for them to be with us so that we can get them, you know, the tools and everything that they need. They were able to route 300 seniors so that they were able to go through, and this is all new to them. They were able to go through the neighborhoods and to be able to pick up our seniors to bring them in for learning hubs. So greatly appreciate our transportation partner. Also with that, like I mentioned at the beginning, after-school tutoring, Chartwells provided meals for our students. The senior learning hubs, they also provided meals and food for our kids at that time too. And so the next piece, the college and career readiness support, that is with Arnetta Scruggs. She is with the Indy Urban League. And that's just another layer of support where she is able to reach out to our kids and and just touch base with them to make sure that they're on track. And she's housed in our building as well. The Apex camps, this is not your basic Boy Scout or Girl Scout camp. This is where our kids came in for for three days, the first week of the fall break. And I believe, did they come in the in the second week? Just the first week, just the first week, those three days. And we had a number of our kids that were able to, working with our computer program, the Apex system, to earn those credits back. That's where they get plugged into an Apex course that they have been unsuccessful in a regular course. They went through the whole semester of it, did not pass. And so we're able to plug them into an Apex course to get them back on track and retrieve that credit. So we had a number of our kids that took took advantage of the Apex camps in fall break. And then we're going to also have the same thing. I know we only have one week, but we're going to do it that that one week in spring break. The next piece, the Apex coaches. This is huge because we were able to handpick handpick those teachers that truly are able to make a connection with a kid that they've just met one time. They make those connections and basically they are adopting about about 20 students. No more than 20, about around 20, 18 to 20 students. They have adopted those kids to make sure that they are getting those Apex courses taken care of. Because we, when we, at the end of the first semester, we found out that about 500 credits were still sitting out there that hadn't been marked off. 500 credits in just the Apex alone, the courses. And so that's when Dr. Hanson said, hey, what if we get, you know, a few of these teachers that basically are able to put their arms around, literally, and support these kids in whatever they need to get those credits taken care of. And that's exactly what they're doing. So that's working out very, very well. Those those kids know those teachers like they've had them for years. So that's, that is definitely working very well. The the Semester One Credit Extension Program. We noticed at the end of the first semester that our students, our seniors, we were looking at seniors that were close to getting that passing score. And we looked at specifically English 12, 8, Government and Econ, a few chemistry classes. But they were there, they were right there. And instead of just saying, okay, well, you know, they just, they received the F, move on. No, we kept that grading window open. We have all of our department chairs working with them to to earn those that those percentage points back so that they can get that credit and move on. So they don't have to go back and take the whole class through Apex. So that open, you know, continuing to open up that grading window has really helped those those students that were close, you know, 10 to 15 percentage points away. And so that that is also working out very, very well. Our academic coach, I mentioned Carpe Naylor, who she works with the seniors. She has her own Apex Learning Lab. She has approximately 150 seniors that are in in need of Apex classes, courses. And she, and basically those 150 students are on her caseload anyways. But she is literally in that classroom, making sure that those kids are on track, making sure that they're doing what they need to be doing on that computer each and every day. So that's what Carpe is doing. And again, another layer of support with our ACT and College Application Scholarship Support, Mr. Fletcher through IU, he is with us full-time on a grant. And he's also able to reach out and help our students with all of those items there. The last part that I want to mention about academic support. When we talked about what graduation looks like, and we're we're graduating our seniors on June 3rd and 4th at our Performing Arts Center. It is a, it is a heavy hand that we want to make sure that our seniors know they need to have those credits taken care of before they walk across that stage and get that picture. That is, that's a huge motivation for not only our students, but our our families as well. So we are able to have, we're going to be having basically two graduations. One, June 3rd and 4th, and then one in October. Because this senior summer school session is going to last from June 7th through September 30th. That whole time, we are going to be here for our seniors, getting them those credits that they need to get. Whatever it is, Apex or in-person, it's going to be an extensive senior summer session. Not like never before. Because again, you know, those, all those pictures are going to look the same. We're both sessions, we're going to be graduating in the Performing Arts Center. You'll never know if the picture is taken in June or October. So that's going to be a big, big motivator. And also, you know, we'll have everybody working with those kids that are that are credit deficient and they can't walk the first go-around. So that's our academic support at this time. And I will, I will mention about our, well, I'll mention it right now. Our seniors received, those those students that still need to pass the I-Step or ASVAB, all those seniors received a personal call or or actually a lot of them received, whether we're driving into their neighborhood, driving right up to their home and knocking on their door to make sure that they took part in it. We had great attendance. It was almost, it was probably, it was a little bit better than if we were in-person the past couple of weeks. So that was, that was great news. So yeah, okay. So I'm going to turn it over to Ches Resinoguko to talk about the social and emotional learning. And this is the flyer for the Jump Start Tutoring Program that we offer. You can see the kids there. Alright.
I just have a quick question.
Yes, yes. Is that Ms. Wright?
It is. Hi, Mr. Shepler. Good to see you.
Good to see you, I think. Where are you? Somewhere, okay.
Okay, so all of those 300 students, is that obviously because of COVID?
Um.
Or?
I would say, yeah, a great deal of them, yes. I would say 75%.
Okay.
We normally have, we normally have about 200, 225 or so that are taking Apex throughout the years.
Okay. Well, I just know how easily it has been for them to be distracted at home.
Absolutely.
Because my grandson's very distracted, so.
Yeah, that's why I'm looking so forward to getting most of our kids back in the building tomorrow.
That'll be nice.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I would like to say oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, Ms. Williams?
Yes. First of all, I tell you, my heart is jumping for joy. I just applaud you for everything that you're doing to help our students academically. This is what I have been looking forward to for years, for us to reach out and try to help all students accomplish. Because during graduation, when we would pass out the diplomas, it hurt my heart to see those students that were left behind. And so now I can truly see the journey of a graduate coming to life. Because now we are giving so many opportunities to these seniors in order for them to get their credits and to graduate. And hopefully we'll have 100% graduation rate. I am just so excited. I want to applaud you and everyone that's working with you and the superintendent and everybody for taking on this task. I know that the parents are grateful. This is a great service to our students and our parents in our community. This is a great step in the right direction and I just pray that our parents and students will take advantage of this opportunity. And that when graduation time come, we will have 100%. Another thing, you're having two graduations. Look at this. Isn't that the ones that miss out the first time will have an opportunity to make it up. So we shouldn't have kids standing in the corner crying anymore like we have in the past because they were left behind. I just want to applaud you for that and I thank you, thank you, thank you. I am just so happy right now. I could, I could get some pom poms and do some cheers.
I appreciate that, Ms. Williams. Yes, I couldn't agree with you more. I would love to have 100% walk across that stage and that's our goal. And what we, what I don't want to do is, I don't want to have those conversations with that with the student and those and their entire family saying, no, they're unable to walk. That that's the worst part about my job. And so and I want to avoid that if at all possible. So I appreciate that.
Yes.
Mr. Shepler, hi, this is LaShana Tripplett. How are you?
Hi, Ms. Tripplett. Doing well. How are you?
Great. I first again want to echo what Ms. Williams has stated about the above and beyond that you and your team are going to ensure that our seniors graduate on time. And I just wanted to also include for clarity on that second graduation that will also be included in your percentages, correct? Just as the ones in June. So I just wanted to get clarity on that. And again, say thank you. I know what you're saying is to be true that you do come out as a community leader. You've been out to our organization to make sure that your students have all the resources that are afforded to them. So I just appreciate you and your team not just being on paper, but actually actually putting action behind the words that you're saying. Thank you.
I appreciate that, Ms. Tripplett. And yes, I appreciate all the things that you and your organization does for our students as well. Yes, October 1st is the day where we have to turn in, you know, all of our graduates to the state. So we're going right up to that last day. And so they will be counted in our graduation rate. Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
That's great.
Great job.
Thank you. And now I'm going to have Mr. Resinoguko talk about our, what we do for our social and emotional learning as well.
Well, let me say good evening to Dr. Hanson, President Burke, board members and others. Thank you for this opportunity where we can just share what work we are doing with our seniors. with our seniors in the class of twenty twenty-one. It's interesting that, as, uh, Mr. Shepler was talking about the academic support, I found myself thinking about an old adage that I used to hear people say. Now, I entered education thirty years ago as a school social worker at IPS. And they always said the three Rs. Y'all familiar with that? The three Rs, reading, writing, and arithmetic. Now, you know, I can tear that down and say whatever, but I, I think, I always felt like education did not happen in isolation. It was the E and the S's also, the emotional and social. And that's been touched on by Ms. Griffin, Mr. Shepler. Our students do not get their education in isolation. Nothing happens in isolation. They get their education in a context of how they feel emotionally, socially, what that is, if they're managing it or they're being controlled by. And so we are become quite aware that we need to address the emotional, social aspect of our students in order to enhance that education and allow them to engage in education and their academics without, um, any distractions. So we talk about social emotional support. As Mr. Shepler alluded to, our counselors have always been available during tutoring, the learning hubs and the Zoom offices. Not to just solely deal with the academic aspect, but to touch base with them, to see how they're doing, to affirm who they are, to, hey, we care for you. To give them some basic problem solving techniques to tell them how to deal with that anxiety and et cetera, which is a for real part. Now, we ourselves as professionals, depending on what's going on with us emotionally and socially, determines how effective we are in our own professional jobs, personal lives, and et cetera. Think of adolescents in this context of the pandemic, what they're dealing with and their need of support. So social emotional support. Um, this is my twenty-eighth year here in the district. The last twenty-five years, I've always had a social work intern. I'm a licensed clinical social work, social worker licensed by the state of Indiana. Basically, that means I can do mental health assessment, diagnosis, and treatment. If you need to come see me, I can help you out. Or if you want to see somebody else, I can help you out. And my diagnosis or whatever will be legit. The state authorizes me to do that. But I've always had a social work intern with me to address those social and emotional needs. I knew it was more than just academics. Now, what was interesting, I used to get master level social workers, and I just stopped getting that because there was too much paperwork. But I just got bachelor level and worked with them. But this year, I realized I needed a master level social worker because this is dealing with seniors more urgent. I need someone mature enough. But I was also able to garner the other social interns that were going to other buildings, elementary, middle school, and now high school, to once a week work with our seniors. Those that are credit deficient, to help provide them with the support that they need to do, to make use of all the help that we have. If we don't encourage them, empower them, they shut down. And they don't make use of coming into tutoring. They don't make use of logging on. They don't make use of the extension to go back and get that credit. So those social work interns, they touch base. Now, the social work interns this year, they're using a, uh, social emotional learning module that allows them to have the students to, um, check in once a week about how they're doing personally, and once a week about what's going on at home. Based on that, the social work interns determine what they do and how they intervene with them. I have met with them three weeks in a row, directing them in regards to expectations. I'll meet with them again tomorrow. Every Thursday at one fifteen, I'll meet with them at the, um, Community Resource Center just to guide them on what they're doing. We also have Reach For Youth. This is our second year with Reach For Youth. Reach For Youth comes from, um, the, um, community, um, agency that we should refer students to if they had anger management, family discord, depression, and et cetera. Well, a year and a half ago, they came to us saying, we want to be more proactive. We have something that we can offer. So last year, they engaged with our, um, selected students, teaching them essential emotional skills so that they can engage in the academic. So we're doing this to kind of be proactive so as to get our students to the point and support them in a manner that they can make use of all the academic support that we're providing them. And so that's what we're doing in regards to that. And we'll continue to do that and pull in other community resources that we are touching base with that have assisted us in the past, um, to provide our students with the support that they need. So that's the social and emotional support that we are definitely providing our seniors, especially in the content, context of the pandemic and the isolation and talking to a machine more than talking to one another, so.
I would, I would like to say, uh, to make a comment. Uh, again, I would like to commend you for, uh, recognizing the need to help our students emotionally. Uh, because I don't care how smart they are, if they're going through a lot of things in their life and at home, they need that support. And, uh, we see that, you know, especially since COVID time. I know a lot of, uh, families lost loved ones during this time, and it came close to home where I actually know, and the kids are affected by this, you know, when they leave, lose their loved ones, for whatever reason. So when they come to school, they need that support. So it makes me feel good that you guys recognize that and will give them that support. I mean, I have a, a young cousin that just lost her mother. And, uh, we're, we're getting ready for a funeral now coming up. And I worry about how she's going to do in school because she actually saw her mother, you know, uh, deceased, you know, and, and that has a lot of emotional effect on you, you know, effect on you. So I'm really worried about that. And so when you as a school can recognize that kids have these kind of problems and give them support, it's going to help them academically also. So I commend you for that. Thank you so much. And I'm so glad that we're doing it for the seniors. Maybe eventually we'll be able to get enough support to be able to move on down to the middle school and elementary schools where, you know, we can also give that kind of added support.
Thank you. By this time, we'll have Mr. Matt Dingman coming up to, um, talk about other resources and outreach that we've done.
Thanks, Mr. R., um, Dr. Hanson, President Burke, members of the board in person and virtually. I'm Matt Dingman, Assistant Principal, um, Warren Central, and I'm going to talk to you about our WOW visits. WOW is worn on wheels. This came, um, was an epiphany. Um, and actually attributed to, uh, a comment that, uh, Ryan Russell made in a Zoom meeting. When we found out we were going virtual back in November, Ryan had said, hey, if you have any crazy ideas for transportation, we're going to have drivers all over that are, you know, need a job in the township. And, um, so anything you can do to engage them. So I thought, hmm, if we had home visits. So I got with transportation, got with chart wells, got with technology, got Chromebooks, got food, got buses, and thought if we can show up in a, a bus that says Warren Township on the side to do home visits, we're probably going to have a pretty good, good chance of showing families that it's, it's really the school showing up and not just, you know, a couple of people knocking on their door. So we wanted to take every barrier out of the way for our kids. Since they couldn't be in person with us, we wanted to be able to connect with them. So we took secretary, academic coach, and dean and went out to, um, connect with our families. So we showed up. Students that hadn't been engaging, I don't have internet, but we have a hotspot on the bus for you. Uh, my Chromebook's broken. We got a Chromebook on the bus. Hey, you guys, um, want, want some lunch? We got, we got lunch on the bus. And just went out to engage with our families since they, we couldn't be with them in the building. We went out to, uh, connect and check in with them. So we had several different, um, um, access points of data that we looked at, um, students that hadn't been engaging. We had a form that teachers could fill out for any kids that were virtual, that were not engaging. Um, we looked at midterm grades from the second nine weeks. Um, teachers would just email and say, hey, this kid reached out and said this. Could we do a WOW visit? So the senior team, we went and did, um, a hundred and sixty home visits. Nine twelve, we did over six hundred and fifty home visits. And so we were going out four days a week in November and December. And then in January, when Learning Hub started up, we were going back to, to two hours a week. And then as the, the, uh, program continued to, um, evolve and it kind of morphed, we came up with, wow, can I, you see these? Yep. Uh, WOW, worn on wheels. So as we went to visit our families, um, not only would we talk with them, we would, you know, engage with them, make sure they had what they needed. We would leave them a little yard sign that says, wow, my school loves me. And each, um, class had, uh, the class number, uh, written on there. So we were able to leave something behind. They could stick in their yard, put in their window, put in their bedroom, whatever, to remind them we are, uh, we're pulling for them. So that's another way that we, um, engage with them. And then, um, Mr. Shepler, I think we have some pictures.
Yes.
On the next, uh, we have another slide, but your pictures. So we, we do have, uh, one of these signs for each, uh, each member of the board. Stick in the snow or.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dingman. This next slide shows that, uh, we have fifty-five referrals to our GOT program, graduate on time. It's through our night school program. Natalie Ruder is the director over there, and the HSE, the High School Equivalency Program via Walker Career Center. So fifty-five of our seniors are plugged in there because traditional school's not for everyone, but they're able to get what they need to get and move on. So as you can see, nine have completed the, uh, high school equivalency. And of the nine, one is enrolled in a paraprofessional certification. Two were enrolled in the CNA certification. Two enrolled in the welding cer- certification, and one enrolled in the CDL certification program. So, um, that's just another avenue to reach our kids that might be struggling with whatever it is. Um, but we're getting them back on track. Uh, I had mentioned the, the October graduation. Um, also, we, we are honoring this year, instead of the top ten seniors, we're honoring the top thirty seniors. And it's, it's a real, uh, I mean, it's, it's really very nice, uh, event that we're specifically going to have for our seniors. Uh, we're going to honor our, uh, freshmen, sophomores, and juniors at the honors program. So that will continue, but we want to make sure that we are taking those top thirty seniors and honoring them. And they don't know this, so please don't let this out yet. I just made a call to, uh, Thomas Ostrich, our, uh, Perf Jones rep. And in the past, our top ten seniors have received a very nice Perf Jones ring. Um, I kind of, I didn't really have to twist his arm, but he's going to be, uh, purchasing all thirty rings for our top seniors. So really pleased with that. Also, another way, and you're going to see a, a couple of slides here about seniors setting a good example that we've always had in the first Sunday in May where we recognized those students, um, specifically seniors, a lot of them, uh, but some other underclassmen as well. That's still, I, I, right now, it's, it's, it's not looking good to have that in that setting at this time, but we are going to continue to try and find ways to honor those, those, uh, seniors setting a good example. And we, here are the pictures that Mr. Ding was talking about. A couple of these I want to, I want to talk about. We went out on the WOW visits and I said, hey, I ha- I want to recognize our senior setting a good example. So this is what you see here. Now, the gentleman here in the middle on the bottom, that is not one of our seniors. That is Mr. Johnson, uh, Akoya's, uh, uh, father. And Akoya is up there at the top left. So if you can see that, we go to their house first, and she's not there. She is working at the Hobby Lobby. And I said, Dad, is there any way that we could go to Hobby? He said, absolutely, but I want to take your pic, my picture first. So we took his picture along with Mr. Resinaguko, myself. Um, and then we went to Hobby Lobby. And I, I want to say this, I know I'm going over on time, but when we walk in as this big group, Entourage, our, you know, the whole academic team.
He goes principal mode as if he's in the cafeteria.
Yeah.
He realizes he's in Hobby Lobby.
Yeah, I, I couldn't believe that Dr. Hanson didn't receive calls on this. But I walk in, I see you're right at the first register as I walk in. And I say, Akoya, I need to see your manager. And I'm, you know, projecting like this. It is my school voice. And she goes, uh, o- okay. And, and so she got her assistant manager, and this little girl came over and said, is there anything I can do? I said, no, I need to see the manager, please. And when all this was going on, they had to take somebody off another register and go get the manager in the back. So we're waiting, and I see this line of people at the far register, and they're all just like wide eyed, like what is going on here? And finally, I, I see the manager coming my way, and I go, and I knew, he, whatever, Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith, let me tell you this, you are so fortunate to have one of our seniors setting a good example, Akoya Johnson. And the place went nuts. They were cheering. I mean, it was, it was awesome. So we did that for Akoya. And then we also went and saw, uh, Jenna Keats' mom at home, and she was working down here at the lower left. She was working at, uh, Jimmy John's over there on Washington Street. We did the same thing there. Not a, not a big, not, not as big of a crowd, but we, we, we kind of interrupted, uh, that area. But they just loved it. The managers came up. They wanted to be in the pictures with us. They sent it to corporate of their own corporate headquarters so they can show that the quality of young people that they are recruiting for, uh, their, their business. Those are Warren Central kids and how proud we are of them. But it, it was just a, it's just a wonderful time. Wonderful time with those, with those youngsters. So. And then the last slide, a few testimonials from, uh, some students as well as, uh, teachers. So again, I, I can't thank you enough for allowing us. I know we went over our ten minutes, and I'm going to hear that from Ryan, but uh, he'll take that, uh, out on me tomorrow, I'm sure. But I appreciate that. And if there's anything.
Before you go, um, I cannot let this WOW moment for me go by. I am just sitting here, wow, wow, wow. Okay, I am just so excited again uh, to hear about the, uh, WOW visit, which is so awesome and getting out into the community and, uh, giving them what they need. That is just a WOW moment. And, uh, also giving hands-on opportunities to those students that aren't, that, uh, aren't really doing well traditionally, but giving them an opportunity to succeed. And also giving incentives like the rings and things that you're giving. All of these things that, uh, that you're doing, these are WOW moments. I know that you said WOW stands for, uh, worn on wheels, but I'm saying it means wow, wow, wow. Look at everything that we're doing for our students here in Warren Central. Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
For years, we have been trying to, uh, connect with the families and, uh, get them to come to the meetings or uh, be more involved. The one good thing COVID did was WOW got us connected with families.
That's right.
Thank you for everything you guys are doing, Mr. Dingman. Wow.
Yes. Yes.
I would just like to say, I, Mr. R., I was having, um, some technical difficulties, but thank you for the diversity in the social emotional learning where, um, I saw where Marlin Jackson was noted as one of the, um, platforms that also allows our youth to have that maybe shy or don't want to do in person to also get that social emotional learning through, um, a virtual platform. So again, kudos to you guys for being, um, for the diversity that you've put in and reaching out to our youth and being so hands-on in the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you so much for your time and your efforts. We do greatly appreciate them. You're good.
I did have something to say, though. Um, first of all, I've seen the signs throughout the district. Um, thought it was very awesome. But on the social emotional, thank you because I do know that this is really trying on our families, some of our kids. Especially when mom and dad work, they're having the older. Some of our kids, especially when mom and dad work, they're having the older siblings take care and they're in charge of making sure everybody's getting their, they're getting their, the kids are getting their schooling, missing out on their own. So just thank you guys for everything. I just feel that connecting with our families all throughout, I mean, just another way of ten different ways, ten different ideas. So thank you guys. Appreciate it.
Well, gentlemen, again, thank you for that wonderful presentation. Um, Mr. Russell or Ms. Woods, if I could have you unshare, sorry. Um, and we are going to pivot very quickly once it is unshared so someone else can share. And we are going to move to invest in people with Mrs. Musumba Taylor and Kate Schwartz.
Hi, am I sharing?
Hello. Yep, you are on.
You're good.
All right. I feel like I hear my dad in the background talking about me.
We may or may not be talking to him about you, but it's okay.
All right. Hi, Kate.
Hi.
All right, we are ready.
Okay, uh, President Burke, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. Um, thank you very much for inviting Mrs. Taylor and myself to share the actions around, um, equity that we are engaging in, um, this spring. And we are excited to share a few of those steps with you tonight.
Yes, thank you again for having us. So I am excited that Warren is embracing this mission of really preparing everyone within Warren Township and with our community, um, around the area of equity, equity. We are really looking at making sure that with everything that we do in the township, with the support of the board, with the support of Dr. Hanson, of course, that we are providing an equitable opportunity. So when we tie it to one of our goals to provide high-quality effective teachers and administrators, we are doing that. One way that we are doing that is by promoting equity. So we have a couple of things that are taking place. Um, bi-weekly, the Warren Equity Cohort is meeting. Um, that team consists of several different folks from throughout the district in different positions. And the goal of that cohort is to, one, stay informed and educated around the issue of equity. Um, and also to be the eyes and ears, um, and address and review what we are currently doing in the township. A part of that is a goal that we have of making sure that we train everyone around reaching equity. Um, so far, we have been able to train our instructional assistants. We've been able to train some of our bus drivers. Um, today, we have hit, um, part of our central office and will continue with that. And so it is an ongoing process that I'm excited to be working alongside Kate with as well as some other key figures within the district.
Um, in addition to, um, the training that we're currently engaged in and working with our Equity Cohort Group, um, we are also, um, investing in people by presenting, um, them with opportunities to learn and grow themselves. Um, this work was inspired by the work of Debbie Irving, who wrote Waking Up White. Um, she created a twenty, uh, twenty-one day challenge around many things. Um, and we have been inspired by that, um, and developed a calendar, um, and a repository of resources for people to engage in, um, reading, listening, watching, but also noticing, acting and reflecting um, around their own, um, practices around equity and what they would like to start, stop and continue. Um, they have, um, a variety of different, um, learning opportunities that they can engage in. We also, um, provide that in many different formats. Like I said, they can read, um, they can listen or they can watch. Um, and you get to choose either and follow the calendar or you can, um, check out the resources that are listed for multiple pages below. Um, in addition to that, we have also encouraged people to engage in their learning and the conversations and challenge their own thinking, um, along with challenging the thinking of others. And so we've provided them with, um, a platform and a hashtag, of course, to, um, put that word out there. And hashtag equity bound, um, is what we're tweeting with. Um, and you can see a couple of the tweets that we've engaged in. And, um, the conversations are really, um, ranging from those public tweets to, um, their own reflective, um, trackers. And we have a twenty-one day tracking tool that allows our teachers to, um, really kind of provide their own reflections and do their own thinking, but also keep in mind making sure that they're, um, practicing multiple modes of learning.
So part of the conversation that we're engaging in is, um, starts with making sure that everyone understands what we are striving to do. So what actually is being equity bound? And so we have ongoing conversations about equality versus equity. And this is one of the pictures that we shared with the cohort. Um, and it's one of those pictures that has been probably, you've probably seen the first two where you have the three children and you have the fence and everybody's given an equal box. But in giving everybody the same thing, it still puts a few of them at a disadvantage. And then even so, um, the next step is, okay, well, let's give everybody what they need. But as, uh, Warren, um, as our cohort group discussed, we talked about what if we just eliminated the barriers altogether? Okay. So what if we, instead of just creating an opportunity, we created an opportunity where the barriers were gone? And so we are looking at how are we equipping individuals with the tools that they need? Um, and in doing so, how do we create those equitable opportunities? We're identifying areas of inequity within the district and addressing that head-on. Um, recently, we, um, sent out the Hanover Equity and Inclusion Survey and, um, we'll here in the near future, look at the results of those. Those went out to different collectives. So our, um, students and our staff and our families. Um, because we really want to look at some of our processes, some of our protocol. There are some things, if you take a look at our handbook, you take a look at some of our board policy that we are continuing to do because that's just what we've always done. And it's not necessarily what's best for our community. Our community continues to evolve. And as it evolves, we have to be sure that we are providing equitable opportunities to all of the stakeholders. So as we are clarifying what equality is versus equity, we are doing that by providing and educating folks on what equity is. Um, and we are excited about where we are and where we, um, can go. Um, this is not a one and done conversation. I think we are learning. This is something that we will continue to revisit and I'm super excited that Dr. Hanson is on board. I'm super excited and going, I'm going to go ahead and throw it out there. I'd love for the board at some point to participate in the reaching equity training. Um, it is a very powerful, um, you learn something about others, but you also learn something about yourself. And really this process starts with you being able to address what's within you, um, in order to, to be able to then help address and meet the needs of others. So we thank you for giving us time. And we took the five minutes, we were told five minutes. Kate and I were texting back and forth going, I wonder if they were told five minutes? And then I was like, but you let my dad talk and he talks a lot. So I knew that. No, but, uh, seriously, we are excited about this work. Um, and we look forward to continuing to grow this community around the area of equity. So thank you, um, Dr. Hanson. Thank you, President Burke. Uh, are there any questions or comments you have for us?
Well, I want to say.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Taylor, I, Mrs. Taylor, I just first want to thank you. I'm so excited about, um, this whole twenty-one day challenge. And, um, I, you took the question, um, right out of my mouth. I was going to ask about how, um, as board members, can we also, um, be involved in the training? So, um, great job, um, great platform, um, reaching out to our communities and, um, giving a visual description on how barriers do block, um, the resources and what our students and community are able to access. So thank you. Um, kudos and, uh, Ms. Kate as well. Great job. Thank you. We will, Kate and I will work on getting something out, a calendar out, um, just so that, um, we can find a time that works for you all.
Um, I would like to say that I think that was a great idea to, um, work on this, you know, because, you know, uh, working together works. So basically with you doing this kind of training, it's allowing everyone to come together and to brainstorm and to think about what else they can do to accommodate our children, our families and everybody in the district as far as equity, equity is concerned. Um, you know, we, uh, when I was teaching, I started off by saying, and this applies to us, that we have to learn to respect individual differences. And, um, you know, we have to understand that with different cultures, there's different learning styles. And I heard you say that, you know, try to incorporate different things into, uh, the learning atmosphere. And so, uh, with the training, I think that that will allow people to get to understand different cultures, how they learn best and, um, how we can all work together to get that accomplished. Um, not only with cultures, but to recognize, uh, all groups and also physical or mental disabilities. Because, you know, you'd be surprised that, you know, you even have to be able to understand those things too in order to work with people with those kinds of issues. So I think it's great what you're doing and I want to commend you for it.
Thank you. Thank you.
So I also want to add really quickly, sorry, Ryan. Um, I know that this has been on the schedule since before Saturday. Um, but if nothing else, this week in Indianapolis, um, has really been a reminder of the importance of making sure that everyone in an organization from the top down and from the bottom up is aware of the importance of equity and the harm that words and actions can do. And so I want to just echo what everyone else has said and thank you for this work. Um, it is, it is always timely. Unfortunately, it is more timely this week.
Thank you very much.
So thank you so much, ladies. We appreciate your time this evening. And now we will give Mr. Russell his five minutes and see how that clock works for him.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Can everyone see the screen? We're good. All right, Dr. Hanson, President Burke, uh, members of the board. Um, traditionally in February, we come to you with a summer school proposal that, uh, spans what we're going to do in the month of June. Uh, tonight, it's a little bit more unique just because, um, well, we want it to be. And two, I want to take the opportunity to address specifically, um, what we're doing with summer school and extended day remediation over the next, the course of the next three years. Ultimately, while you've heard us refer to this as how we're going to address the opportunity gap specifically that COVID has caused. And I think it's important to recognize that no one believes that two weeks or twenty days of summer school is going to eliminate that opportunity gap for students and it's really going to take ongoing support over a period of, uh, several years. So, uh, tonight I want to shed some insight to our current thinking about how we start to address that through various ways. Uh, but within that will also be included our specific plans for this summer school session, uh, as we start off. Obviously this aligns with the board goals specifically about offering high-quality programming and also, uh, based on the approach that I'm advocating that we take in summer school, uh, supporting the whole child as well. So again, historically, I would come to you tonight and I'll ask really for two things. I would give you an overview of what we were doing with third grade iRead camp. Uh, remember remediation is required by law for students who fail the iRead assessment the first time given. Uh, traditionally, we do that obviously through a variety of ways. One of those would be extended day tutoring opportunities, uh, from April on. And then another one of those opportunities would be a, um, summer school or as we affectionately call it, iRead camp in June, uh, for those students to retest. Uh, we would also talk about summer school. Uh, most of summer school would offer, uh, a combination of both first-time credit opportunities. Students, we call them get ahead, students who are trying to take a course so they can fit, uh, a different or specific course into their schedule in the upcoming year. Uh, very frequently, students trying to take one semester of PE or something like that. We traditionally had a lot of students who would want to take, uh, some specific prerequisite classes for AP or dual-credit classes so they could get ahead as well. And then also, um, for students who needed help with recovering credits previously. Um, traditionally for that, it's been two sessions a day for three weeks in June. Um, but tonight I want to talk to you about a more comprehensive approach. Um, so needless to say, we're not going to just focus on kindergarten through, through third grade. Um, but what we're proposing for this summer and really the next, at least three summers afterwards is a K-12 summer school opportunity for our students in Warren Township. Uh, so tentatively scheduled, um, those dates would be June seventh through June eighteenth. Uh, that's two weeks, uh, or ten instructional days, uh, hundred and fifty students per cohort. So hundred and fifty students in, uh, current kindergartners, a hundred and fifty current first graders, uh, and so on. Because of that student enrollment at approximately six hundred kids, I'm proposing that we have two locations for elementary summer school. I'm currently not comfortable putting six hundred kids in one building, given COVID. Uh, that being said, three hundred, um, we have learned is more than appropriate a size as far as both be able to socially distance students and do that. Uh, focused specifically on a three and a half hour a day schedule. That's good. That academic schedule would be eight-thirty to twelve, uh, daily for those two weeks. And then that essential, the curriculum will be founded on the most essential of essential skills in, uh, reading, math and, uh, SEL. Uh, also important to note, as with all options, K through twelve that I'm going to talk about, there will be an online option available. Um, we do also continue to believe that it's critically important to make sure we can engage all students regardless of, um, their not only learning style, but their parent preferences in terms of the best way that they would want to receive that as well. You notice I broke it off kindergarten through third grade because you have to remember those are going to be our next year's first graders through fourth graders. In the next slide, I want to talk about our fourth through eighth grade. The difference in that is our fourth graders, and I'm really working from the bottom up here, our fourth graders, I would actually propose attend summer school in the IMS location. It's a good transition opportunity for them, uh, to start working in an IMS building. Um, but very similar approach as I talked with K four, hundred and fifty students per cohort. Uh, that location has been identified as Raymond Park Intermediate Media or Middle School. Same schedule, same philosophy on the essential foundation skills for, uh, language arts, math and SEL. Um, with the caveat here i- in the in-betweens, our current fourth graders to attend at IMS. Our current eighth graders would attend a specific session at Warren Central High School that wouldn't necessarily be for credit-bearing classes, but for more targeted, specific remediation in eighth grade reading, math and SEL curriculum to best prepare them to get off on the right foot when they do become a freshman. We still, as I will mention here, um, shortly, we still will have the option for eighth graders to attend credit-bearing classes at the high school as well. Um, but for this specific students identified, um, it'll be different. Traditionally, the eighth graders who took advantage of credit-bearing classes at the high school were the students trying to get ahead. PE was popular, um, and, uh, health in some cases was, but there really weren't a lot of other options for our, uh, eighth grade or ninth grade transitions to go into, uh, to actually earn credits. Some of the logistics to that, um, because if we really take a look, I know it's February seventeenth. Um, but it's been quite some time, if not ever, I don't know, uh, that we've pulled off a K-12 summer school approach in Warren. Um, one thing we learned a lot from the Learning Hub model is just because you invite a hundred and fifty students doesn't mean a hundred and fifty students will attend. Um, and that's something I want to be very cognizant of because I want to maximize, um, if we have, if we're trying to service a hundred and fifty students a cohort, we, we can originally invite a hundred and fifty students. I don't necessarily believe that all a hundred and fifty students want to take advantage of that. So I'm proposing a. So I'm proposing a three-tier registration process for that. Basically, what that would mean is 150 is approximately anywhere between 17 and 18% of a cohort, um, that we would initially invite our tier one, uh, 20%, identify those students the same way we originally did for Learning Hubs. These are our students who are most, who have the most significant academic needs, who are most at risk of falling further behind. Um, and we will give them a registration period of two weeks. Um, actually, we will give them a registration period from April 5th, all, actually through May 21st. But once the 16th hit, if we still have spots available, we would open up to a tier-two registration where we would invite another 15 or 20% of students to take advantage of a registration opportunity. And then if we still had spots left within summer school, uh, come May 3rd, we would open it up to anyone who wanted to take advantage of that summer school. I would love to be able to take advantage, or I would love to be able to offer summer school for all Warren students. We simply don't have the staffing or resources to be able to fully do that, although we'll have other ways in, in which to engage in enrichment and other things with students throughout the summer. Key aspect to this, no student fees. We will not be charging, uh, any registration fees or transportation fees to be able to do that, or to be able to do this. Um, we don't want that to be a barrier for any student who needs any type of academic or SEL support through the. Um, and again, part of this is obviously contingent upon staffing. Um, we have the staffing down part for Warren Central High School because we do it every year and we have a process for iRead 3 Camp because we do it every, well, except last year, do it every year. Um, that being said, under this model and to keep class sizes, what I would say appropriate for the guides of remediation, we would need to hire over 100 K-8 teachers to participate in summer school. I believe teachers will want to take advantage of that. I also believe some teachers want their summers and that's obviously perfectly acceptable and we want them to be able to take that break. When we talk about high school, summer school, that, um, the dates proposed are a little longer specifically because, uh, it's incredibly difficult to earn a credit in two weeks. Um, although we have that take place in some cases, we certainly want the opportunity to engage them in this case for, um, 18 days. One of the key differences here is traditionally in high school, summer school, we've offered two periods. So a student had the opportunity to take two classes in person in the summer. Um, because of the need, uh, we're actually proposing that we add a third period to summer school. So a student will be able to take advantage in one, two or three in-person summer school classes. The other caveat to this is, um, when you look at, um, the start times, sometimes a 7:15 AM start time is hard for high school. That being said, we can also offer students who are just taking two classes a 9:30 AM start as well, uh, to help with that. Because specifically that's going to, um, I'll say this, I don't have a preference on how a student takes advantage of summer school. I just want them to take advantage of summer school, uh, you know, when it's being offered. And if that means we're scheduling them one in-person class that starts at noon, we're all for it. Um, but that third additional class, we believe will add, um, certainly a support for our families and students. The other part of that that I, um, sp- specifically want to call attention to, um, with that is a lot of these students obviously have been, uh, obviously hybrid or virtual and a combination of that. Instead of simply sticking the majority of these in-person students into a credit recovery lab in summer school, they would specifically be with a teacher, if they're recovering English 9, they'll be with an English 9 teacher recovering in, in person rather than just through a credit recovery program. Uh, Mr. Shepler referred to that, that program as Apex, um, but obviously we'll still have some of that going on, but I'll talk more specific to that. Um, in light of the high school presentation tonight, um, I know Kim Asbury came to me and today and said, "Did you really mean June 7th through September 30th?" Because it looks a little funny for summer school. But one thing we've been absolutely adamant about is, um, we understand that, just like every year, not every senior by June 3rd is going to have the ability to walk, for whatever reason. Um, what we're committing to is adopting that, that 2021 cohort, uh, quite frankly, forever. Um, and making sure that just because they don't meet that initial bar, uh, to be able to walk at graduation, uh, we're actually creating a whole separate summer school for them. Um, so specifically with that is, um, they have the advantage of taking it, they have the opportunity to take advantage of any of the traditional summer school period one, two or three, uh, to be able to recover those credits so they can potentially participate in that graduation in October. Um, they also, uh, Mr. Shepler referred to these as Apex tutors. Um, as he said, we have specifically assigned a small group, I believe it's 13 exactly, group of teachers to specifically work with students who are in desperate need of intensive credit recovery. Those staff members have agreed to work after school's out from June 7th to September 30th to see those kids through. So they'll have the opportunity to engage virtually through summer school through that whole part, or through that whole time. And then traditionally, um, our adult education program did not start offering night summer school classes until July. So students would take advantage of the June summer school sessions. We're also going to offer adult education classes two nights a week and that traditionally runs from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM at Walker Career Center, starting on June, uh, actually 8th, because that's a Tuesday. Uh, but June is, June as well. So I know we talked a lot about seniors tonight, but when we look at the plethora of opportunities that we're trying to give them and different ways we can get them there, um, they would have the advantage of going to school at 7:15 or quite frankly, at 7:00 PM at night, whatever it would take, or engage fully virtual with their Apex coach, uh, throughout the remainder of time. Um, so we believe offering those additional June night sessions as well would be a support. And quite frankly, that's going to be available to more than just the senior cohort as well, because we certainly have the ability. If students want to come and learn from 4:00 to 8:00 PM, we'll, we'll create the resources around it to make sure they have that support. Uh, I, I referred to this earlier, just specifically with that, one thing that I've asked the high school to specifically look at this year is limit the amount of in-person classes they're doing so we can focus more specifically not only on the quality of that summer school work, uh, but on the most significant needs for all cohorts within them. So, um, there's another slide to this, but specifically it's English 9, 10, 11 and 12, uh, that they can take advantage of in person. Uh, the three core math classes, algebra 1 and 2, and then geometry, and then biology. We have what I would call catch-all credit recovery labs going on as well. Um, so if there's a specific English course or something that doesn't fall within there, if there's another math course that doesn't fall within those in-person, we will have those licensed teachers running those labs. They will help those students and give them the support within that, that with science as well. Um, we are, um, I'm working right to left now. Um, one of the significant changes is with the exception of PE and health, all first-time credit opportunities, we're going to, we're going to have students engage in Indiana Online Academy. Um, those are the get-ahead classes, those are the classes, again, the free up space in their schedule. Um, we take, um, we actually take a fairly unique approach as a high school. Uh, most high schools in Marin County only offer IOA for summer school programming. Uh, we don't believe that's the best case for credit recovery in any shape, shape or form, but a student who wants to get ahead and take, um, um, PCC or if they want to take, um, preparing for college and career, or if they want to get ahead and take, um, a, a journalism class or whatever, we can certainly do that if it's counselor-approved. Meaning that we want to make sure that, um, you know, we're not, a kid's not putting himself in a difficult situation by able to complete that, that coursework. Um, again, first-time health credits, first-time PE credits. We really see those as ninth-grade orientation opportunities as well to get more. This year, eighth graders, next year's ninth graders into the high school to get familiar with it, to do that as well. And, and those in-person opportunities, certainly, um, we think that they are, um, certainly, uh, good opportunities. Again, just another comment on the night school and summer school opportunities as well within there and the courses offered. Um, again, no student fees, no registration fees. Um, we, um, certainly want to start, um, there's been a little bit of advertisement as well. As you know, our counselors are deep in scheduling processes for our students for next year's schedule. So some of the conversations our high school counselors will be having with students right now is, um, you still need to take English, you, you know, make up English 9-2. Um, so that's going to be a summer school opportunity. So I'm going to schedule you in English, you know, 10-3, but I need you to register for summer school and take English 9-2, um, type of thing. Um, but for incoming ninth students, start to advertise those first-time credit opportunities, PE specifically, um, mid-March, March 8th to be exact. Um, en- enrollments all due by the end of April. And then, um, really start more, um, getting a lot better handle on, um, you know, really what the full enrollment scope will look like. And then be able to notify, uh, students and families of their schedules by May 24th. The reason why it takes us a while to do that is we have to schedule all those students in there and make sure we have appropriate staffing, uh, for summer school specifically. So the biggest change for the high school model is first-time credits, IOA, and then three periods instead of two specifically. And then obviously, and just an increase in night school opportunities for our students. All right, turn the page, chapter two. K-12 intercession camps, um, it's been a while since we've tried to do remediation work over our fall and spring breaks. Um, we've, uh, traditionally that started when we were on two separate calendars. We had a summer school option for the traditional calendar and we had intercession opportunities for year-round schools. Um, I'm proposing that, um, again, for the next three years, uh, we have both a fall and spring intercession for our students, uh, that would really take similar philosophies to the summer school philosophy, or similar philosophies to the summer school approach. Um, it's really about creating an extension of the school year, uh, for this group of students. Um, around 150 students per cohort, no fees for students, and then obviously making sure that we can maintain, um, a small classroom size for the teachers participating in these ac- activities. So they can certainly, um, certainly provide that support. What that does, uh, when you look at students who take advantage of both summer school and intersection, intercession, it really specifically adds four weeks to that student's school year. One thing we know that time is a big variable, uh, in closing the achievement gap. And we've lost the opportunity of a lot of time through COVID. Uh, so four weeks a year times three years is 12 additional weeks for that. Yes, we can and will do more, uh, but as far as an additional approach, an additional approach to that, uh, is something we need to consider. Uh, the other thing that, um, I'm excited about as well is to really invest in our school-based, uh, extended-day tutoring programs. Um, you've heard just some of the success that we've had. Um, but really in this, in this model, what I'm proposing is we quadruple the nu- number of hours in tutoring support that our school, each schools get. Right now, most of our extended-day tutoring money, uh, especially K-8, comes from our federal grants specifically to be able to give, um, like a K-4 school would get 100 hours a year paid through title funds to be able to tutor. What I'm proposing is that, yeah, that times four. We will give them 100 hours per quarter to be able to support their students. Those, um, that has potentially access to all students in the building. Obviously, we want small groups, um, the students for that, but that will be certainly managed by school principals based on the data that they're seeing their students, uh, produce within their building. Um, I put this last slide together just to kind of give a broad overview. And thi- this would just be, um, one year of this three-year plan, but it would be basically rinse and repeat over the next two years under this. If someone asks what opportunities or how are we addressing learning or the opportunity loss that our students have had, um, you know, specifically, uh, there's something that will be going on every month of the school year in order to address this. And again, as proposed, this is over the next three years, all the way up into really 2024 as we close out that school year. Um, you know, specifically, um, you know, we're analyzing, uh, the, the specific ways that this can be funded. Obviously, consideration of CARES Act and other federal funds within this to be able to invest within that. Uh, there is a cost, we're still working on, uh, the specific analysis of that. The other thing I would say is we always, um, we've always had the regular summer school costs. We're really just trying to expand it to make sure that it hits all K-12 students. Um, so that's, um, in a very, as brief and brilliant as I could be, the overview for summer school and I would be happy to answer any questions.
I just want to say, um, thank you for the opportunities for our students. Um, I know this has been a really rough year and I know that there's going to be gaps. And I like the way that you're targeting. And I also wanted to say for, I like the strategy of eighth grade going to the high school. Because you might have a kid who still wants to get ahead and that time gives them an opportunity to take a period three. But more than anything, I just think the opportunities that we are giving our kids and our families to close those gaps, they're here and I like the idea of extending the day multiple times. So thank you very much for bringing this to us today.
And I would like to just add to what, uh, Terry said. I hope I'm not muted. I just want to add to what Terry said about, we just want to thank you because again, I say this is a wow meeting, a wow moment because just to become aware of all the things that we're doing for our students and our families. Uh, I think the credit recovery is such an, uh, excellent opportunity that we're giving our students. Um, also, like she said, the extended day tutoring and also nighttime classes. I mean, you know, this is just so awesome. And, um, I just want to make sure that we get this information out to parents. Uh, can I ask you, um, you know, sometimes, you know, we might send out newsletters and things like that and parents don't really go through all of it. Is there an additional way that you're getting all of this information out to parents so that they will be aware of all these opportunities so that they can push their kids?
Yeah, so initially, we're going to start, uh, Ms. Williams with summer school just because, uh, and again, we can't invite the whole student body to summer school. So we will be personally inviting that first tier of registration to summer school. Um, and, uh, the same thing for the intercessions moving forward. The extended-day tutorings that, uh, would start taking, they're taking place now, just not on the quantity that I'm proposing. Uh, those tutoring opportunities and everything else, as you mentioned, yes, there'll be some communication through traditional forms. Um, but also as we take a look at how we increase our communication reach, um, and give parents the, uh, parents and students access to the information so they can take advantage of that. Um, that will certainly be included within that as well.
Okay, that's great because when I think about the messages that Dr. Hanson and Rick Shepler, I, um, we are very informed when they come on and they give their message. Um, I know that when the parents listening to, uh, Mr. Shepler's, uh, messages and Dr. Hanson's, uh, messages, they really become informed on what's going on. Um, in addition to us sending out literature to the parents, maybe that can also be someone, maybe yourself or someone that can really, um, uh, get on and let the parents know. Uh, Mr. Shepler, there's so many opportunities that you presented us with tonight. Is there any way that, uh, someone could just come on and just talk about these things? You know, all the things that you told us tonight, just, you know, begin to let parents know, um, by phone about all these opportunities. And then you know that they're listening and they're become aware. Because if it's on paper, they might not read it and they might just throw it down.
Absolutely.
Hey, Mr. Ryan, um, I'm sorry, this camera and I. Um, question, um, I know you said that the fees will be waived for the, um, scholars that are taking the classes and with the Indiana Online. Will there, wi- will there be an application fee, um, or a form that the families need to fill out? Because I know there is a fee that, um, is occurred with taking those Indiana Online, um, courses.
Yeah, we, we pick up the fees, uh, there is an application. We have the ability to, um, we've been in collaboration with Indiana Online Academy. Uh, we have indicated that we want the fee to be completely waived, um, for our families. We will have to work on communication specifically to that. Um, because that registration process for IOA is not done by us. They have to go to the IOA website. Um, once a student successfully requests enrollment, then our contacts at our school level have to approve that uh, before those students get to take advantage, um, of any of that coursework. So we'll definitely have to work on a communication strategy for that. Uh, but in terms of fees, whether it's IOA or any of the, um, o- other specific things that I mentioned tonight, there'll be absolutely no fees for our families.
Okay, that's, that was my question because I know that process is separate from the school. That's, that was my question because I know that process is separate from the schools. So when the families go to register, will they receive something to tell them how do they get around those?
Yeah, there's not even a payment option there. The only reason I know is because my, my daughters take advantage. Of IOA coursework in the summer over the past couple of years and I know her school as well waived the fees. So after you click, or after you go to it, it says your school has waived the fee, blah, blah, you know, it provides that information. But I still think creating a tutorial or something for families or students specifically. Because a lot of students will self enroll themselves would be a helpful process.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
So quickly, I know in the past that when we've offered transportation to summer school, we've offered it at the beginning of the day and at the end of the day. Are we looking to offer between the tiers or do we not have that worked out yet?
I can't speak specifically to that now. I think one of the things that we have to evaluate is. How many are falling in these, in these categories to that? I mean, it would be my hope we can, the other consideration I was just talking to Dr. Hanson about is. Traditionally in the summer, if it was just high school, summer school and I read camp, we could, but we're potentially. Basically with the high school numbers and the K eight numbers, we're looking at about twenty five hundred kids in summer school now. So I don't know what the specific driver availability is in the summer and that. So some of that's going to be dependent upon staffing as well. It would be obviously my desire that we would run even a three tier schedule at the high school to be able to do that. But I can't promise you at this point that will be logistically possible.
I'm going to be honest, that was the answer I was expecting, I just wanted to make sure it was discussion point. My only other question has to do with. Gym of all things, so I know that we had students take online gym last year, I don't think it was through IOC, I think it was just an online program. And my understanding is that students who were. Less than successful at the program last year. In order to retake it, at least one or two of them were told they needed to take it kind of in the same way that it was taken. So if they'd taken online gym, they needed to retake online gym as opposed to in person. Are we offering both options or? Is that too far in the weeds and we're not there yet?
I don't know, but I can find out and let you know.
Sorry.
My assumption is what I know off the top of my head about the specific IP program that they utilized for gym last year. Is instead of retaking the whole class, they were giving them the opportunity to retake the. Components of the class that maybe they didn't previously and that was that, but that is a speculation and I can find out.
And I apologize, I knew it was an in the weeds question, but. I see no one else.
All right, thank you guys.
Could you do me? Okay, having heard all of the reports, we are at the business of citizens present and Terry, do we have any green cards?
No, not at this time.
No, we do not. So that pushes us to the policy items. We are going to begin with resolution five hundred and eighty three point twenty one. Let me get my screen going. And that is a resolution that opposes education savings account and voucher expansion. This resolution was shared with the board earlier today. And I just want to give you. We at the legislative forum and at other times have had discussion about vouchers and the cost and the expansion efforts that are ongoing. So I don't want to repeat any of that, but I do want to put up some data on the real cost in dollars of these programs. This is information from ISBA. And this is the annual cost as well as the annual enrollment for those who are receiving vouchers. For this year, the annual cost is estimated to be one hundred and sixty five million with an M dollars. Which puts the total over the past ten years at one billion with a B, one hundred and sixty five million, nine thousand dollars. And that is money that is taken off of the top of the K twelve education bucket that goes to public schools. Vouchers were originally recommended to the legislature as a way to save money because they pay at ninety percent at the top tier for a student. With the idea that if a student had been in a public school and then they moved on to a voucher receiving school, that the state would be able to recoup that ten percent. That only works if everyone who received vouchers is also someone who previously went to public school. This graph shows the growth of those who received vouchers who had never attended a public school. And what you can see is that as of last year, we're very, very close to two thirds of the students who received a voucher last year. Never having attended a public school. And then down here, this is the one that kind of hits me the most. There would be an expansion that has been proposed to income eligibility. So under the program as it currently exists, there are tiers of how much that percentage tays out. So that ninety percent is the top tier, there's a fifty percent, there's a seventy percent depending on the household income. The current language that is proposed specifically in ten oh five removes all of the tiers to a straight ninety percent. But at the same time raises the income eligibility. To this level right here, which is to say that my household, a household of five. Could make a hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and seventy four dollars to qualify for a voucher. I can only speak for myself, but I would say that if I made a hundred, if we brought in a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. That I would really not expect for the state of Indiana to pay to send my child to private school. That seems a remarkably high income for that. I am more than happy to take any questions, I've pulled the first voucher back up if anyone has any. Okay, not hearing or seeing any, do I have a motion? Julie moved, is there a second?
I second.
Gloria, was that you?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Gloria seconded, is there any discussion? Not seeing any, Terry, could you call a vote?
Howard. Rachel.
Yes.
Julie. LaShawna.
Yes.
Gloria.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
And I also, yes.
So the motion passes. I will be sending a PDF of the signed copy in the morning to our legislators to share this motion. Next. We have motion, resolution five hundred and eighty four as opposed to five hundred and eighty three point twenty one. This is a joint resolution between our education association and the board of education. On the bills that were mentioned and again specifically ESAs and increasing the vouchers. And if I can do this correctly. Jenny Whitaker was unable to be here this evening, but she did send a statement for the WEA. The Warren Education Association is in full support of this resolution. We agree with the stance MSD Warren Township School Board is taking with regards to HB ten oh five, SB four twelve and SB four thirteen. Warren families have chosen to raise and educate their children in Warren Township. Their tax dollars, the resources meant for their child's education should never be diverted to public, to private schools. My apologies. She has also met with her board and they have already agreed to sign the resolution if we pass it. So stating all of that, do I have a motion? Terry made the motion, is there a second? Howard seconded it, is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, Terry?
Howard?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
LaShawna?
Yes.
Gloria?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
And I also, yes.
So that resolution passes, thank you again for your support. That gives us to our last statement of the evening. Resolution five hundred and eighty five point twenty one. I will be very blunt, this is a very straightforward statement. It lacks a lot of kind of fanciness that is put into other resolutions, that is how you can tell I wrote it. This has to do with specifically us as a board of education, offering our support to our teachers' union. Our acceptance that they are working for both the teachers and what is best for the students. And also discussing several legislative attacks that are currently taking place and have taken place in the past. In regards to teachers' unions. Do I have a motion?
I'm in motion.
A second.
Okay, so that was like five people, so we're going to go with Howard moving it because that was the first thing I heard and LaShawna seconding it. So my apologies for those who weren't. Is there any discussion? Nope. Okay, Michelle was just checking because your mic was on. Terry, hearing no discussion, could you call the vote?
Howard?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
LaShawna?
Yes.
Gloria?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, it's your name is.
So that carries, the education association was informed of the resolution ahead of time and did send a statement as well that I'm going to read. The Warren Education Association appreciates the support and supports the resolution by the MSD of Warren Township School Board. This resolution not only recognizes the importance and values of a teachers' association. But the work and the advocacy done on behalf of Warren Township students by the association. WEA stands by its long history of working alongside Warren. And believes that a collaborative spirit between the school district and the teachers' association only strengthens the education of all of our students. So I would like to thank members of the board for their time and for hearing these resolutions. As well as members of the association who helped with the joint resolution. And again, all of the resolutions, once they are signed and all pretty and done, will be sent on to our legislators. With that, we are on to discussion items, beginning again with Mr. Russell.
Okay, good evening again. Tonight I have four policies up for discussion and I, I think I have these in the right order. So I'm starting off with policy number twenty two sixty one, title Title One Services. Specifically to this, significantly, it's an update in language specific to federal ESA guidelines about. How language, not how language, but how incorporating Title One planning to the school improvement plan process. As you know, each of our schools has a school improvement plan that consists of teachers and parents and community members in some cases. And it gives them an opportunity to not only develop the specific plans and goals schools are going to accomplish. But gives them insights and ways in which they can do that as well. It does add language and this has been in ESA for a while that about supplant or supplement, not supplant. Which basically means that federal dollars spent really need to be on something unique. And not something that we're already spending general fund money on. And then just some legal policy about how to file a Title One service complaint. Which is always already pursuant to a board policy twenty two sixty that we have in place. Happy to answer any questions about that one. Okay. The sister policy to that twenty two sixty one dot zero one. This is very specific to family, parent and family member participation in Title One programs. I will note, these are practices that we already currently do, we're just updating policy here. Each school for their Title One, Title One plan or school improvement plan has to incorporate a needs assessment, comprehensive needs assessment. We already do that for the school improvement planning process. Many of you who obviously have students have probably received the parent's right to know information that gets mailed out in Title One flyers every year. We have to dedicate a portion of our Title One funds to family involvement money, which we do. And requires each school to have a family involvement policy, which we do. It's only incorporated in their school improvement plan, but it was part of that process that we did. And continue to do with family friendly schools, so happy to answer any questions about that as well. Okay, next one, policy fifty one eleven. Determination of legal settlement eligibility for enrollment students without legal settlement in the corporation. As you know, we do offer enrollment for non-legal, non-legally settled students in Warren. Every, I believe it's September, I come to you with an out of district enrollment report. This specifically adds language to reflect that we don't charge any students transfer tuition fees. There's specific language added in there about a provision for staff employees to attend. Which basically sets an income or a, well, not only an income. The dollar amount it gives is the employee has to make eight thousand dollars a year. If they don't make eight thousand dollars a year, they can't attend your school as an employee child unless it's at least eight thousand dollars a year. The note I would give everyone on that is our process to have non-legally settled students in Warren goes through the same application process whether they're an employee or not. So every student, whether they're in, every, yeah, every student who wants to attend Warren, who's not legally settled in Warren. Fills out an out of district application and we take it through that same process. But it is updated language to reflect Indiana code twenty dash sixteen dash eleven point five. Pretty straightforward, but in actuality, no practical change for us. You want me to do the fourth one, I know it's later on the list, but. And then last but not least, promotion placement retention policy fifty four ten. This really just upstate language about giving principals the right of assignment for students who fail the I read test. As you know, if a student fails the I read test, they have to take part in remediation. But it's up to the parent or it's up to the principal to make the best placement determination for that student next year. If they do fail I read, then that student's required to get third grade reading instruction, even if they are placed in a fourth grade room. As a side note, any determination about placement when it deals with a student with special needs is also a determination of the case conference committee. We've been practicing this, it's been DOE guidance for the past, I believe, three years now. And before that, we had the forty three year program that we used to do. So again, all of these are updated language, no change in practice for us. Any questions?
Just a comment on the fifty one eleven where you're talking about the eight thousand. For B, it says three comma zero zero, so that's a typo, it's probably three hundred or three thousand or. It just needs to be said, whatever it is.
So I think it was eight thousand for an employee and then it was a provision of three thousand if they were a coach getting a stipend specifically within that. So we just need to update that, it's probably my fat fingers. Thanks, Julie.
Thank you so much, Ryan, appreciate it, I know you're good. Ms. Griffin for policy fifty two twenty three.
Good evening again, I'm here to discuss board policy fifty two twenty three. The purpose of this revision is to change the word from absence to release time for religious instruction. Within this policy, when a parent would like for their student to participate in religious instruction. Once they enroll their student into an accredited. And I shouldn't really use accredited, but like a recognized religious organization or association. Our families can bring that enrollment to their principals and if it requires that they miss instructional time during their scheduled school day. We now can make sure that the student is marked present. But attending at another location rather than marking them excused absence, as some schools have done in the past. And this just keeps it a lot cleaner. And also, there were just a few other minor, just kind of. And also, there were just a few other minor, just kind of like cleaning up the language that also happened. They clarified, they deleted the phrase "by an authorized church or religious organization", and then added the phrase "the religious instruction must be conducted by a church, association of churches, or an association that is organized for religious instruction and incorporated under Indiana law." And then they also made a minor kind of like grammatical tweak. They switched the word "will" and also to ensure that students and parents were very clear that if we release you to attend instruction at another campus, you must make sure that you do the work that you're missing during that allotted one hundred and twenty minutes that the principal can approve. Are there any questions?
I don't see any. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
And last but certainly not least, Ms. Woods for policy fifty-three thirty-five.
Okay, President Burke, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. This is an update on our care of students with chronic health conditions. And it mainly is about adding language around seizures, around both seizure education for our staff to recognize the signs of the seizure, know how to respond, and then also for making sure that we have individual seizure plans for students on file. So both in-school and after-school activities, we know how to respond to that student's unique needs. If you know anything about seizures, there's lots of different types, and the response to those is varied ways. Some kids can have certain medications and others can't, and you know, time matters. So the details for each student's plan is really important. This is also updating some language on what defines a chronic health condition. If you'll see on that first page, we did strike through some of the specific outlines for chronic health outlines, I, some certain chronic health positions that were listed, right? Like, we can't include all the chronic health conditions. And so there is a summary at the back of that policy that includes some of those, but we didn't also want to then leave out because there are so many. So, but a chronic health condition is really over a long period of time, and really often lifelong. So, for example, a student breaks an arm, or they break a leg, they have to have their gallbladder removed, you know, something like that. That is not a chronic health condition, because, you know, within a few months or a year, that will go away. So it's really something more like allergies, like seizures, diabetes, something that's gonna, you know, be lifelong. So feel free to reach out to me if you guys have any questions.
No questions, but thank you as a parent of a child with epilepsy who has had a seizure on our property. Do appreciate it.
Glad to have those play in.
It really is.
Thanks, Annalise.
Okay, seeing no other comments, we are ready and prepared to move on to closing comments. Michelle, we will be in with you.
I would just like to say, all of you have earned your angel wings. All of this hard work and long hours and long days that all of you have put in for these kids. God bless you all. And Warren Township is so very blessed to have you guys. Thank you so much for everything you do. And I hope you guys can sleep well at night because you have earned it. And if you haven't been, take some couple of days to yourself. You definitely have earned a good night's rest, several of them. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Michelle. Gloria?
Well, I want to, I'm not gonna say very much because Michelle said it all. I'm just gonna end up by saying, this has been a great wow, I love that wow, a great wow meeting tonight. And I'm just amazed at how hard everyone is working in Warren to make it such a great system. I appreciate all the hard work that you're doing, and I know the parents and community can appreciate it too. So I just want to say thank you again. You know, I'm also a parent, and you know, I have students that are attending Warren, nieces. And I tell you, I am so happy that they have all of these opportunities. I have one that's a senior and one that's a junior. So I'm hoping that they will take advantage of any of these opportunities that's being offered, and I just want to thank all of you again.
Thank you so much, Gloria. LaShawna?
I would also like to say to all of the presenters and administrators, thank you for not just being on the surface, but as we say in the community, getting in the weeds and really trying to make sure that our inaccessible families and students, our needs are being met. It's just been amazing. I am truly proud to be a part of the Warren family. And I know as our journey of graduates, you are starting at the beginning with the kindergartners, and just keep up the great work. And again, anything I can do as a board member, community member, I am here to help and support our families. I'm just kind of overwhelmed. It's a blessing to be able to see this from a board's perspective and see how it actually reflects on the community side too. So, great job.
Thank you so much, LaShawna. Julie?
I will say that the report section of our board meetings are probably my favorite, except for when we have kids here, then I like that best. But because I get to see and hear everything that we're doing for the kids. The action items and the discussion items are things that we have to do. But the report really gives us the nitty-gritty of what's going on. And it's amazing. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Julie. Howard?
No, I just kind of haven't gotten used to this mute, unmute thing, so bear with me. But I do want to say, like, sitting here and hearing all the great things that the high school staff is doing for seniors, it's been real, you know, heartwarming experience, really has. Mr. Shepherd and his staff have identified the effects of the pandemic on the kids as they are forced to, you know, participate in a modified learning process and understanding the emotional toll on them. And this understanding has been, has them, you know, creating the emotional, emotional program, the Warren on Wheels program, and, you know, have really connected with the community, with the most, with the Wow program, Warren on Wheels. And that's just a great thing. So we want our, we want our MSD to reach out to the community and show them how much we care about their kids. And I think that compassion was shown in all of the programs that are now being generated from now until throughout, well, until October, when we get the last few kids across the graduation stand. So I just want to say, it's really cool that we're, we've got these programs going, you know, the Equity presentation by Mrs. Taylor and all. Just wonderful stuff. And so I'm just elated by what I saw today. My hat goes out to the staff. You guys have definitely put in the work in your presentations and cheering with us, the things that are going on with the administrators. So I can't say enough about how pleased I am that where we're headed, and let's continue to move forward. I'm really hopeful that the programs that, for graduation, really dried the needle from the average of, what, eighty-three, eighty-three percent in the last three years. We can drive that needle as close to a hundred percent as we can. We'll get to a hundred percent. Gotta be realistic about this. But I think we can get into the ninety percentile. And if we can do that, all of that work that we're gonna, that we're gonna do from now until October will have been worth it. Would like to also say I agree with Gloria. It's really a sad thing to see those kids who didn't make it. And I hope we don't have that, that kind of sadness this year. Again, thanks for everything, and I just want everybody to be careful when you're leaving out of here. Remember now, it's still dangerous out there. We gotta be safe. Careful. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Howard. Terry?
I thank everyone for the reports. I know a lot of hard work goes into it, but the hard work that goes into a report is nothing with the hard, nothing like what you're doing for our kids. Filling those gaps are just important, and I appreciate the high school. I appreciate the equity. I'm looking forward to that training. Just the opportunity that we're giving kids. There's no reason a senior should not graduate this year. There are so many opportunities for them, and I like the idea that our high school counselors and support staff are meeting the needs and going to the houses and putting that extra piece in. I just know there's a lot of hard work. We're just now going back in person on our hybrid again. But I believe in our kids. I believe in our teachers. And Howard, I'm with you. I think we're gonna have more than ninety percent graduate this year. Have a good evening and be safe.
So that leaves it with me. I would also like to thank everyone for the reports. I am a data person. The more numbers you can hit at me, the happier I am. And so it is always really, really good to see those, that we can put metrics with what's going on, as well as see the personal outcome of that data. I feel that school board meetings in the past year have really happened at these weird bookend, beginning-end times. We had a meeting right before we went to fully virtual again. We're having a meeting now, the night before we wake up and have sixth grade and above students return to school. And I just want to acknowledge, I have received emails on both sides. I have received emails from teachers who are worried about the new strains and are worried about teaching a person. I have received emails from teachers who are beyond excited to go back into the classroom. You are heard on both sides, and you're both simultaneously right at the same time. Now is not the time that we are going to stop watching for safety concerns. This pandemic is too dangerous for us to decide now to do that. So please know that, as excited and as important as it is that we get those students back in person, we do understand that there are real safety concerns out there that we are still keeping an eye on. I want to really thank Ryan and Tim for their efforts at putting together the Learning Hubs. I wasn't joking when I said I have been reached out to by so many teachers who talked to students that they really truly felt that they were making a difference in those hours, and they were just really, truly grateful for the opportunity. So thank you so much. And if I am missing people, thank you to everyone who has put those together and worked on them. They've been really, really important to our students. Finally, on an off note, people keep asking when PEBT cards will show up. My last name is Burke. ours arrived today. So there is hope out there for people who need those. With that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting, and thank everyone so much for coming and attending.